Welcome, everyone, to the city council meeting for November 22nd. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody from all of us. And our agenda has been shortened tonight. We have just a couple issues before us. We have, first item up is the action item on an adoption of an ordinance. Oops, we're missing the city manager. There he is.
Are you ready?
Yeah. Ordinance concerning authority of traffic control officers to direct traffic and amending sections, blah, blah, blah. And, city manager, you want to tell people what that's about?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an opportunity for the city council to take action on amendments to Eugene code that would change the title of a community service specialist to a community service officer, providing authority to the community service officer to direct traffic on the streets and public thoroughfares of the city. These amendments are necessary to provide authority for Eugene Police Department, CSOs, to direct traffic in situations concurrent with authority provided by state statute.
Okay. Council President, you want to put this motion on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. I will. I move to adopt Council Bill 5039, amending sections 2.660, 5.010, 5.060, 5.065, 5.275, and 5.276 to Eugene code, providing authority to community service officers to direct traffic on the streets and public thoroughfares of the city.
Moved and seconded. Questions? I'm not seeing, did anybody press a button? Nope. Oh, just to vote. Okay. I looked at your press and I didn't see anything light up on here. All right, so I think we're ready to vote. Would you please vote on the motion? Eight in favor, none in opposition. It passes. All right. The next item is a public hearing, an ordinance concerning downtown public safety zone. City manager, you want to introduce the topic?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing concerning the extension of the sunset date for the downtown public safety zone and providing amendments to the ordinance. The amendments add sexual crimes and violations and add organ-revised statutes to applicable provisions for which the municipal court may exclude individuals for 90 days following a show cause hearing or for one year following a conviction. We have staff available if there are any questions.
Any questions? All right, I'm going to open the hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a complete request-to-speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have seven people signed up to speak tonight. Kimberly Gladen is first, followed by Mark Johnson.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, and I live in Eugene and in the downtown. And I'm coming to ask you to please extend the safety zone in the downtown. It is a tool, it's a safety valve. We get a high concentration of people with behavioral problems and other issues and criminals in the downtown. And the families that live down here, many who are low income, for instance, in the Aurora Building and in the Wahaal and in my building, most of us don't have cars and we don't have a choice but to walk everywhere. And we encounter not just one or two people in a daily walk, but maybe 10, sometimes 20. Sometimes in the summer, you can get as many as 30 people just in doing your business. Many of us take the bus and do other things. This is our safety valve. When somebody really, really gets out of hand, and that usually sets off other behaviors. They also tend to be targeting other homeless people, mentally ill and the disabled. And this is the only way we have to get them off the street and maybe have a break for a time. There's a lot of kids downtown, families, that their children have to walk through that every single day. And when the same guy harasses you day after day, or the same guy's committing the same crime day after day, it really doesn't teach the children that there's any value in doing the right thing because their parents are doing the right thing and not getting the same service. We don't have the luxury down here of living in a nice neighborhood where there's safety. We're in this 24 hours a day. And Lane County Jail does not keep a lot of the offenders long enough for anyone to have a relief. I mean, you're a target all the time. And a lot of the low-income families don't speak up, and a lot of them, too, are working so hard, they don't have the time, really. So I'm speaking for a lot of people in the downtown. You know, we do need this. And I don't believe it hurts people. There are services outside of here, and people can get exceptions to come in if they need a specific service, but they just can't come and hang out and continue harassing people. So I'm urging you to keep this tool in the toolbox for a while longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Johnson is next, followed by Tom Camus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mark Johnson, Eugene Ward 5. I work for LTD, so we have a vested interest in downtown safety. And in fact, we still pay for a half of a patrol officer in the downtown area, so it is important to us. We're part of the Downtown Security Council. Our staff participates in that with business owners and residents downtown to make sure that things are going well and that we can maintain a safe environment down there. So I just encourage you to extend the zone, at least until the officers who are entering now are on the street and on patrol, because it is, as the former speaker said, it's a great safety valve. The police have used it very well, and they've used it responsibly, and I think it should continue until we have enough officers to control the environment down there. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Camus is next, followed by Eugene Drix.
I'm Tom Camus. I live and own a business downtown, in Eugene. So yeah, I have a vested interest in what goes on down there, too. I do recommend, I hope, that you guys keep the exclusion zone. It is another tool that the police can use. And in my personal opinion, I think that the city has done enough to neuter our police department and their effectiveness. This is at least a little bit giving back. All the outcry about this, I'm really wondering where the outcry was about the exclusion zone for prostitution. This is the same type of exclusion zone that's already in the city code. Why is there such an outcry about the downtown? We're getting rid of the people who are doing bad things downtown. Isn't that the whole goal? That's why we opened up the mall, that's why we did all of this, right? I just want to tell you guys about one thing, just in case you don't know. Futurama, it's a cartoon. Eugene, Oregon was mentioned. And the whole thing goes like this. Scene: Bumbase Alpha. Hobos and robots warm themselves around fires. Gus, welcome to Bumbase Alpha, the biggest hobo jungle in the quadrant. Bender, main character. I've seen bigger. Oh, wait, I'm thinking of Eugene, Oregon. This is our national reputation now. This is something we should really be ashamed of. And if we can do one thing with this exclusion zone, to keep the bad guys out of the heart of our city, unless the heart of our city is moved to Oakway.
Eugene Drix is next, followed by Dave Hauser.
Thank you. My name is Drix, and I live on High Street in Eugene. Very proud to be there, thank you. Yes, that was nice to get some publicity in that show. And also, Matt Granick does that, and he also does The Simpsons, and they talk about Springfield, our sister city, so, and all over the place. I guess tonight I'm speaking on the exclusion zone in downtown. And I like downtown. I like our city, of course I do, because I'm always here. The future's going to be made of things that we don't quite know yet. And being open to change and learning together is what it's all about. And the exclusion zone, that sounds unusual until you try it out and see how it works, which is what apparently we're doing now. And people show up, speak up, and speak on it. You know, we're going to have LCC downtown real soon, and we're going to have houses and people living there. And it's just going to get fuller and richer and better, and a lot of forces will come to be that help take care of it. So this is just what we're doing now. So I'm encouraged, I'm encouraged with our forum here and being able to come and speak. People thanked me, the strangest people thanked me for being here, and you know, I feel like I'm just talking with you guys. But the most unusual, well, one of the most, was during the Butte-to-Butte run. I'm out on High Street waving at the runners, and some woman runs all the way across the crowd, works her way through, and thanks me for showing up here, because she and her husband like to watch me speak. And you know, that's our town, that's our community, and I love it. And if I can reflect it back by showing up here in the middle of the rain, that's what I do. Back to downtown, Drix. Oh, okay. Here's a new thing in our town that I'd like everyone to notice. Right next door to the building that's next door to Lazar, Lazar's Bazaar, in business for 34 years, there's a mural. There's an interesting mural of a guy grimacing, and when you first look at it, you go, what the duck is that? And then you look a little closer, and, has everyone seen this? Do you know of what I speak? I'm hopefully adding your curiosity. Well, you look a little closer, and he starts to look familiar. And you look real close, and it looks like Jack Nicholson. And you look even closer, and you realize he's biting down on something rubber and screaming. And then, hopefully, and I'm giving away the tell here, but hopefully the epiphany hits you, and you realize that's the pivotal moment from One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, which happened to be written by a guy named Ken Keasy, whose statue is one block away. And then you realize, oh, that's right, that's art, making connections in our little humble bird here, and I'm just so proud of it. So wander down and see that mural, and realize that is Eugene today. Tomorrow will be even different. What I wrote down here, mental, civil, and local. That's us. That's Eugene, and I've been called crazy, in fact, my whole life. What I do here now, I used to get thrown out, I used to get thrown out of class for doing it, and now I'm lauded for it. And it's just what makes community. This is my little offering to do, so I'm really glad to do it. Look, I have extra seconds, I could just keep talking. Well, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I do appreciate it. And we'll see you here on the other side. Remember, you may be the turkey at the meal. Thank you.
Thank you, turkey. Dave Hauser is next, followed by Laura Potter.
Dave Hauser, 2168 Elkhorn Drive. I'm here tonight representing downtown Eugene Incorporated. Mayor and councilors, first, I want to thank you, the Police Commission, and the staff for a thoughtful and thorough evaluation of the downtown public safety zone. The activity report, the public forums, the Police Commission discussion, your work session have all provided good information, good process, to guide your decision around the continuation of the zone. So with all that process, I guess I just want to add three quick thoughts. One, you know, I think it's important not to overstate or understate the importance of the zone. It's a tool, but one of many tools we need in our public, in our downtown to encourage a safe downtown where everybody is welcome. And the downtown public safety zone provides a replacement to an incarceration capacity that doesn't exist right now. Perhaps it will someday, but in the interim, this provides an opportunity to temporarily displace chronic violators from our downtown. Second, I think it's been implemented responsibly. There have been no complaints to the police auditor, and there's been no examples that I'm aware of, of abuse or misuse of the ordinance. And third, I think the concept proposed of a sunset makes sense. It gives us a chance to build a bridge to future police capacity in the downtown, and then to see what things are like, to let you do that evaluation. So in the end, admittedly, it's not a perfect solution. If there were a perfect solution, it would have more resources for police, adequate jail capacity, more access to drug and alcohol programs, more mental health resources, and more resources for those who find themselves homeless in our downtown. And perhaps someday we'll have all of those things, yet today they don't exist. So while you can't do everything, you can do something. And I think continuing the downtown public safety zone is the right something to do in the situation that we're in today. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Potter, you're next, and our final speaker is Jim Welsh.
My name is Laura Potter. I live at 814 Van Dyne in Eugene. The downtown exclusion zone is an important tool in achieving our community's public safety goals downtown. Without the ability to sentence offenders to jail time for violations, the number of repeat and chronic offenders has grown in our community. The exclusion zone is designed to provide an alternative to incarceration by displacing chronic violators from the downtown. And since the zone has been in place, we have seen a sizable decrease in target crimes. At the same time, as Dave just talked about, the police have used this tool very responsibly. There have been no complaints to the auditor or any signs of abuse of this tool. Since there will be seven new police officers downtown in 18 months, we ask that this be extended for that time period until we have those officers on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Final, Jim Welsh.
Mayor Piercy and City Councilor Jim Welsh residing at and representing the Eugene Association of Realtors, 2139 Centennial Plaza. We have followed this, tracked it, and supported, of course, the exclusion zone as a tool, as it's been stated and explained here by the Chamber of Commerce, and we are also a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So we've had a long, long following of this and a long discussion, and we certainly believe that this should be supported. After talking with those who introduced this to begin with, and it was going to be something that was temporary, and we support certainly the Police Commission and Chief Kern's recommendations, that it is an 18-month extension, that sexual offenses should be added to the exclusion list, and that state statute should be used to tie the municipal code in the provisions for which a person can be excluded. And we believe that the exclusion zone has helped improve public safety downtown, and certainly appreciate Chief Kern's and city council's efforts, everyone's efforts, in listening to both sides on this issue, because I think there is good points and has been good points. And certainly in our organization, as a very diverse organization, the Realtors coming from both sides usually on the issue, sometimes three or four sides, but on this one, we had to listen to everybody, but we think this is important. Business downtown, and someone who is born in this community, I remember, my parents being parents who wouldn't let their children very far away. I was able to do my Christmas shopping as a very young individual by myself up and down the streets of Eugene. So I remember it as a very, you know, safe and warm place. I have a very fond memory of that. So me personally, I believe that we've got to get back there, and we can. And I believe that what has been done so far, and the decisions made, we're going to get there. And have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for comments from council. Councilor Zelenka.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out on this cold, wet night, especially Tom and Kimberly. I know you're downtown. The exclusion zone's been used 93 times in the last two and a half years. Only two crimes were actually reduced, relatively minor crimes, but yet very annoying crimes, liquor violations and criminal trespass. All the other ones are the same, except for assaults, which actually have gone up in the last, in that area. Interesting thing to me about that is that while those two crimes have gone down in downtown, four other neighborhoods saw a commensurate increase in them. So we didn't eliminate the behavior, we just moved it around. And it's not in downtown, which is a good thing for downtown, bad thing for where it moved to. The other thing that struck me from the information that we received was that 60% of the folks that are excluded are homeless, self-identified as homeless, and the rest are probably low income. And the other one was that we have these things called pre-hearing exclusions, where they get excluded before they get to go before a judge. So I would ask the city manager to bring back two amendments that I would like to propose to this exclusion zone. The first one is to eliminate the pre-hearing exclusions. I believe there are about 11 of them. And I talked to Chief Kerns and other folks, and I don't see that as a problem, and neither do they. And then the second one is dealing with this issue of homeless folks and low-income folks. And I asked Judge Allen if he had, if many of the people had any counsel or advocates with them when they came before him, he said almost none. So since this is a city-originated and created law, I would like the city manager to bring back an amendment and show us how this would work and what it would cost to provide advocacy for those that are coming in front of the judge for a 90-day exclusion hearing.
Thank you. Although I'm opposed to the exclusion zone, I would support Counselor Zelenka's amendments if we end up renewing it or keeping it. I want to respond to a couple of things that were said. Mr. Camus, incidentally, I appreciate all of your speaking, and the fact that I disagree with you doesn't mean I don't respect you. But as for the prostitution zone, I did oppose that exclusion. And I, you said there was no outcry, there was some outcry about that, but it's typical that people who are not powerful don't have a lot of defenders. And the people who are being excluded are not powerful. And they're probably not powerful enough to feel that they can complain to the police auditor. It takes some confidence or some feeling of empowerment to be able to do that much, even. I wanted to respond also, those are the two responses I have, but I do think that downtown is everybody's neighborhood, and people should have the right, they have the right to be somewhere, and they should have the right to move freely. If there's a real crime, then there are other remedies, and they should be charged with the crime that they've committed. But I don't think exclusion is a good thing. They will be somewhere else, and it's probably better to have people gathered downtown than to have people who are undesirable going out to Monroe Park, for example, or out to the river, or out to Whittaker, or down by Sundance. They're going to go somewhere, and that will just be a new, a new problem, and it's better to let, I think downtown should be a place where everybody, all kinds of people, all incomes, all social degrees, all degrees of social importance can gather and interact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. When this subject, Counselor Zelenka, of indigent support was first raised as a, as a part of this discussion, I had a similar sort of thought, that what are we talking about here, a dozen a year? Let's just find out what it costs to provide that level of defense. And I had a long talk with Judge Allen about this, and he had some very grave concerns about us embarking on that as a policy matter. So I guess I would, I would suggest the city manager that he get Judge Allen's opinion on this matter, as well as a part of our discussions when we come to the decision-making process, because he had some fairly strong concerns about the precedent we'd be setting to do that. And, because I thought it would be a reasonable sort of solution as well, but it turns out in law, there are some, some real concerns. And secondarily, I guess, when I made the motion at the work session, I said that I was perfectly willing to add the, the pre-hearing exclusions as an amendment to this, considering that we'd have broad support at the table, that if we did, I would add that as an amendment. And I've already prepared that amendment, and will be making that as a part of the motion when it comes forward. So, because it does seem to, that we have some, at least the preliminary indication I have, is that it seems like we may have some support for extending this. So I have that already. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
So what I asked for was to not to provide legal counsel. What I asked for was to provide an advocate, and an advocate is something very different. And I asked the city manager to actually investigate this, and maybe, John, you could explain this a little bit more at this point, and your conversations with the judge and the city prosecutor. And my understanding is there is a difference, and we probably have people here that can go into that difference a lot.
Is your mic on?
Don't believe so.
I don't think it's bad.
No? Is that better? Yeah. Couple more years, you'll know what button to push. We have others that can speak in much more detail if you want. My understanding is, is there is a significant difference in the two and in the support of the two, that legal counsel would set some precedents that we wouldn't be comfortable with, an advocate we could be comfortable with. And I mean, talk both, well, with our court administrator and with police chief, I believe the advocate would be an okay place to be. The legal counsel would not be, from our perspective. So there's a, a difference in those two. So an advocate would be someone who would, we would programmatically fund that, in the term of about $20,000 a year, that would actually explain to folks that are coming for a hearing what's going on, what their, and what's, what the procedure is and what their choices are, but stop short of being, giving legal advice, which is what the judge was really concerned about, and I understand that concern. It sets up a whole bunch of different precedents, but, so that's what I was talking about, and maybe when the motion comes back, it can be a little description of what an advocate would. And we can talk about both of those, so we can respond back to the legal counsel piece and also provide additional information on the advocate. Right. And Chief, did you want to add something?
I did, but I thought you covered it really well in the last, last comments. That's right, there's a vastly different thing between the two. An advocate would have is their primary responsibility, concern over the welfare of the person who's, who's at the exclusion hearing, the defendant essentially, and would be aware of what their options are and what variances are available to them and how to go about obtaining them.
Right. So this would, would deal with some of my concerns about the fact that 60% of the folks that are excluded are homeless, and the rest are most likely low income. Thanks.
Counselor Cheese.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your opinions with us. So I'm prepared to support the public safety zone with the amendment that Mike's going to be adding, and that Alan, Counselor Zelenka and Counselor Clark spoke to. And I just want to speak to the advocacy piece on a more broad sense, and it kind of ties in almost with the prostitution zone. So at that, when the prostitution zone was in, in effect, there actually was advocates that worked with the human rights system, that actually worked with some of the prostitutes because they were some of the victims of a couple officers. So there's that, that connection for me, because I was a part of the advocates at the time. And when I think about the advocates, I would like to just kind of put it, what the community's thoughts are, the councilor's thoughts are. You know, when we're talking to the police auditor, Mark Gisner, he commented that his job is not to advocate, it's to make sure that if there's a complaint that comes forward, that it follows the letter of the law. And I think that that's kind of a gap, and I don't know if anybody else sees it, but I personally do. So when we're looking at an advocate, I would like to think about, you know, possibly making this more broader than just working with the exclusion zone, because I think people are challenged a lot of times. They don't know if they need an attorney or not, and that would be our advice to give them. But if they understand the process of it, they would have a more informed consent of what they're, you know, what they're involved with. And I don't really think that that's kind of our role, but I also kind of feel like it is, because especially with the public safety zone, it's council-created. We're the ones that's, you know, giving it the blessing, so I definitely feel that it is our role to, to help people through this process. And, but I still also want to think about the police auditor and how a role like that would look. And I would hope that you would, you know, would look, and I see that the chief has already had conversations with a couple of different social service agencies, because I think that, you know, we do not need to create the wheel, it's kind of, there's best practices, and that there are people out there who do this kind of work anyway. So I mean, I would hope that we could partner with somebody to make sure that, that we're addressing this issue. Thank you.
Counselor Solomon.
Well, I feel regarding this issue of advocacy, I feel like we're sort of sailing into some pretty dangerous territory. And if we're going to appropriate any funds for advocacy for people who've been convicted of breaking the law, or, not convicted, but who have been, that have been, received tickets for breaking the law downtown, then I would expect us to appropriate the equal amount of funds to victim services, a victim services organization in downtown, because, you know, those are horribly underfunded organizations. And so I frankly won't support that particular amendment, but if we did, I would certainly hope that we would appropriate an equal amount of funds towards victims' services.
Counselor Clark.
Yeah, I want us to make sure that, and I recognize that you have some information coming forward that speaks to both of the issues of legal defense and the cost, as well as the advocacy kind of outlining what it would be. But I want to make sure
But I want to make sure that we're drawing those distinctions real clearly, because I think that the challenge that I see here is that if you get someone as an advocate, one of the first things that the people for whom they'll be advocating might ask would be legally-oriented questions. And at what point does the city run into some challenges if our, if an advocate that we've provided begins to provide legal advice? And so, we need to understand where those bright lines are and what we're actually providing in, if we can't provide legal advice, what is it, what's the utility of what we're providing? Thank you.
Counselor Polling.
Counselor Clark covered what I was going to say, and I agree with Jennifer that if we are funding an advocate, we also need to equally fund or help fund victim assistance, because in a lot of cases, these are the people that are taking the brunt of the criminal activity and the misbehavior by the very same people that we're excluding from the downtown area. So, I think there ought to be some recourse for the victims of these crimes to fall back on.
I think we're into a full debate here. Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would be more than willing to support having volunteers do the advocacy. I don't have a problem with that. The problem with that is there's not a consistency of what kind of, what parameters you would put on a volunteer. If somebody's on the payroll, then you have that person answering to a boss. And I just personally witnessed it. I know I worked on a couple cases with, I want to call you Mr. Fitzpatrick, because I don't know your level right now, where, you know, where you just, you just don't know what the outcome's going to be. And the training that is, that can be done by the police department itself can be very concise about what the role of an advocate would be. I don't know where that would live in what of the different commissions we have. It used to live within the Human Rights Commission, and I don't know that they would want to do that. Should it belong with the Police Commission? Should it belong to the CRB? I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that whatever training we give for the people, that it's consistent, and it does stay within the parameter of advocacy. So, and that's why I would hope that we could partner with a social service agency, because we would not only be helping, you know, like the homeless program that they have, they have somebody who, a person who is an ex-homeless person monitoring the campsites. And I think that that, you know, that would be the kind of vision that I have in my mind of somebody who has had interactions with the police and probably knows a little bit more street savvy and would be able to help navigate them without trying to offer them legal advice.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I think that, Mr. City Manager, you can, when you write the memo, be clear about what an advocate's role is and address the liability issue. I'm pretty sure that we can craft a program that will provide advocacy about describing the process and working people through the process without providing them any legal advice. I think it needs to be a, the distinction for me between the victims' rights and this law is that the, that this is council-created, and the, most of the victims' rights and funding for those groups are associated with state laws, and they do have funding for it. They're woefully underfunded. I agree with that 100%, but I think that's a separate issue, and I would rather not cloud the two issues together. I would like to have that conversation a different day about how we can advocate at the state level for more funding in that regard. But I think we need to take responsibility for the actions that we take as a council to make sure that it treats our citizens fairly. And the fact that these are, as Counselor Taylor said, powerless folks, for the most part, that are 60% homeless and probably mostly low income, that makes a huge bit of difference for me.
So, just a couple of comments here from me. I appreciate the folks who came to speak at the hearing tonight, because everyone really spoke clearly to, we don't have a perfect situation here with perfect answers. We're sort of doing the best we can under a set of difficult circumstances. I don't think this, I'm not fond of exclusion zones at all, but I don't, I don't think this exclusion zone or public safety zone is the intention to exclude people. It is to, it's not to exclude law-abiding people, but is specifically directed at a list of repeat offenders. It's not to really exclude, but to protect a wide variety of people who do move around our downtown and to protect them from behaviors that are not legal. And it's a part of a journey to a safer downtown. And frankly, with these two proposed amendments, it makes me feel a lot better about the public safety zone, because I think it's putting some needed due process in place. And in terms of the advocacy, I just want to remind everybody that you're talking about advocacy for someone who hasn't had a hearing and has not been found guilty of anything yet. So, they're just, you're trying to put something in place so they understand their circumstances. And my advice to council is keep it simple. Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to kind of, I want to, like, end the conversation, but I just want to talk a little bit about one of the other advocacy programs that's going on right now that maybe some people aren't aware of. On every other Monday morning, all the non-English-speaking people who are Spanish-speaking come between, I think it's eight and noon, and they have a court-appointed interpreter who explains to them everything the judge is saying. And then they have a layperson who is there on their behalf to help them to understand the different cultural differences, nomenclatures, like how the language is spoken. And it's called paso a paso. You're welcome to come and observe it. And that's the kind of program that I was thinking of, something similar to that, where, you know, you wouldn't necessarily, you know, we're not talking about hundreds of people here, you know, and so it wouldn't be necessarily a huge program, but it would definitely be for people there if they want to take advantage of it. But that's the other thing. There's no guarantee that anybody's going to even want to use this. So, I wouldn't, I do want to keep it simple, Mayor. So, I just kind of wanted to share that with all.
Counselor Clark.
Kimberly in the back, and Tom, and Betty Snowden before him, and several others, and me, because I'm down there every day, have said many times to this group, talked about the things that people have had to endure downtown prior to doing this and prior to some of the efforts with regard to public safety that we've made in the last few years. I'm not as interested with this council doing something to affect victims' rights programs on a statewide level as much as I'm interested in what victims downtown experienced when their windows are etched, or they're spit on, or they're having to deal with the things that this ordinance was designed to address that local people go through. Now, thankfully, we've curbed a lot of those. But as the mayor said, this was designed to address repeat offenders. And Chief, perhaps you can tell me, were there any people excluded in the course of the last two years that didn't previously have some manner of run-in or some charge or some degree of previous experience where this ordinance was dealing with a repeat offender?
My recollection of the report is that everyone was a repeat offender, save one very early in the program.
Thank you. And so, if we're going to do something that, and I can understand someone who doesn't understand the system, someone who is at a disadvantage and powerless in the system, I certainly can understand the fairness and the wisdom of helping them. But when we're talking about trying to deal with repeat offenders who are continually victimizing local people downtown, I'm a lot less inclined to want to help them as much as I am to want to help the victims that deal with it all the time.
Counselor Solomon.
Well, I can't believe that we have people that have come downtown tonight to ask for our help in downtown, and here we are talking about how to help the criminals. Being homeless or poor doesn't mean that you're stupid, and doesn't mean you've somehow lost your brain, because those people can still determine right from wrong. And so, I just don't think that an advocate is helping them take personal responsibility, which is what all of us do every day. And again, speaking to the point that these are repeat offenders, so they've been through the system. They don't need an advocate. They need somebody to get them off the street, and they need another venue to get them on a different track, and it's not, and it shouldn't be an advocate.
Counselor Zelenka.
Well, this isn't about helping the criminals, nor is it about making sure that we lock up everybody that's been a previous criminal. This is about a law that we're instituting that, in my mind, has questionable constitutionality. And I'm trying to make this system better and to alleviate the concerns that I have around its constitutionality, especially around due process. These are not people that are convicted of a crime. These are not people that have gone before a judge in a trial and had a criminal conviction against them. These are people that police officers are recommending to the judge that they be, and that's the only person that gets to decide on a preponderance to the evidence, that they be excluded for these crimes. What we're talking about is not serious crimes either. We're talking about minor crimes. Liquor violations, and they're classified as minor by the police department. We're talking about liquor violations and criminal trespass. Those are the most, the bulk of what we're talking about. And for those that are more serious criminals, we treat them differently and hopefully get them in front of a judge. So, what we're talking about is making sure that a process that we set up, which is complicated and a little bit arcane, and is different than almost all the other types of processes with a different outcome, which means you are excluded, you are prohibited from being in a certain area, much like that, that's the kind of process that is very different from the traditional process of what we're talking about, and something that the council is instituting. And that's why I think we need to step up to the plate and make sure that it's as fair and as reasonable as possible. It's not about helping criminals. It's about making sure that the process is constitutional and fair.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I appreciate all the commentary tonight and all the different perspectives, and since we're not voting on anything tonight, we don't need to, we don't need to process this entire debate, particularly because I've heard two requests, maybe more, for information that I would find very helpful for continuing the conversation. So, really, I would look forward to the work session where we can have some common terms defined. We may be actually differing in terms of what our vocabulary is. But also some additional background, both from the city attorney, the municipal judge, and other people who might be able to help us guide through this discussion. So, I don't really have anything to contribute tonight, because I need more information. But I would look forward to the work session to talk about it.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Pryor, and I think we're ready now to, yes, do you may.
Mayor, I just want to say, we're not scheduled for a work session for this. On December 8th, it's scheduled for action. What we've, I've heard we've been asked to bring back is two amendments, these, the two there, and then information about a advocate and a legal counsel. So, that's what we will be bringing back.
That's fine. I understand. It would be part of that discussion.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.